I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We're having a little technical difficulty here with sound, but I think we've about got it corrected. First on the agenda is public hearing. This is council intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to a rezoning request by Marine Holding LTD for property located at 310 Bell Street Northeast. That's tax parcel 499-A-13 from I-2 General Industrial to B-3 General Business. The property is scheduled as industrial in the future land use map of the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this request?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay, if you'll state your name, please, for the record.
Glendora Dalton.
And address your comments to council.
Yes, are you interested in the four to five minute PowerPoint that we suggested that we present?
If you put it together, yes, huh?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, can I get your name one more time, please?
Glendora Dalton.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just like it sounds. In lieu of the time, we wanted to hopefully address the questions that you all would have relative to the facility, what it looked like, and some of the core challenges that immediately came up at our first application. The Twin Family Life Center is intended to be at 310 Bell Avenue, next to the Hubble operation here in Christiansburg, a children's services operation. If you look at the very front of the building, when we did our initial application for leasing, we found it just as it is. It's very highly equipped. This is about 5,000 square feet that we're looking at, but the facility itself encompasses practically 10,000 because it goes to the rear. This whole operation is dedicated to our father, Charles over Twin. If you want to know about the parking, that was one of the things that came up early on. Here are some examples of the front parking that would be accessible to the people. There's already been approved by licensing at a state level for credentialing us as a childcare provider in the state of Virginia. Ample locations for playing, the main entrance, this is where that is, there's fire exits that Mr. Heinlein actually identified when he came by and did a preliminary building inspection, which is at that point when we didn't get the inspection back in writing that it was brought to our attention, stop the presses, you're not zoned properly, and that brings us here this evening. Ample restrooms, all of the facilities, one of the main things that attracted us to this particular location was because it's well-equipped after having been the home of Lifeline Ambulance Service. It's well-equipped with plenty of washer and dryer, bathroom facilities for multiple boys and girls, adults. Also, we have a storytelling room, that went a little quick, but we can always go back if you need to. This is the registration hall, and you're going, well, why isn't all this set up? You're not zoned to have a licensed daycare. We do not. We had to stage this for the Board of Education. This building is intended to be a certified preschool if it is rezoned, and we cannot, even though we signed the lease, we cannot operate a licensed daycare there without that rezoning. Here again are just some of the other facilities that we've staged for the inspection by the licensing board. That's the princess room, and this is where girls rock. We want to be able to reach all the children in the neighborhood. My two sisters who are sitting in the audience this evening are part of this collaboration as well as other community people. We are staged dead smack in the middle of three Section 8 housing apartment complexes. Many of those, after canvassing the area, talking with the parents, the church across the street, Christian Growth Center, do not have computers in their home. We will be staging in this second exit, which is a compliance issue that is already in place, fire exit. Those two doors represent where our computer lab is going to be, but we're not wanting to put all those things together until we get a determination from you. And of course then, there has to be health and nutrition. We have a complete inclusive curriculum that we're going to be rolling out to all of the children who wish to attend this facility, and that's the kids' kitchen corner where they learn about healthy choices. So that's what that represents. Somebody real happy with the spinning will come in. Well, wouldn't that be indicative, okay, of anything? Okay, our administrative offices, that's just a representation there. One of the things that came up in our initial application submission was appropriate and compliant play area. The front of the building has both to the right and to the left an area of this caliber, which is far enough off of the main flow of traffic that it already has been deemed to us by Julie Kimbrough of the state licensing organization that it meets compliance. So we're covered there. Just a few facts you might be interested in. Everyone on our staff must have background checks, it is not an option. That's already been submitted to the state police department. Our application for our certification and licensing, again, is continued upon what happens in this zoning commission decision. And when Mr. Heinlein came representing the town of Christiansburg, along with our director, Everett Younger, who's here today as well, he did a walkthrough. He looked at the facility and after scoping through the entire 5,000 square feet, he simply had one recommendation, and that one recommendation for improvement was that we install a pull-down or a push-button fire alarm for children under five years of age to be able to access. These are just some general facts about who are we, there's ample security there at the building, fire and safety. The rest is just operations, I don't know that you're interested in any of that. We will have an after-school program that deals specifically with behavioral issues, job development skills for the older group, and our staff, they're already in place, already background checked and drug screened. At the administrative level, our master's level people who've been doing this for more than 20 years. So we have not just thrown this together and decided that, oh, let's make a couple of dollars and open another daycare. This is our mission, this is our work, these are some of the criteria that the state has, and this is what we're offering you today for the town of Christiansburg. What you're missing out on is the video, it'll be on our website by many of our staff, that says that we feel that being able to rezon this location, we've already talked and built relationships, not just with the business owners, but with many of the residents in that neighborhood. The church across the street, Christian Growth Center, Pastor Saul and his wife and his congregation, they are in great support of what we're wanting to do and wanting to know what we can do to help give opportunity. And what's the opportunity that the Twin Family Life Center is offering? We're offering academic excellence to those persons who can't afford at Harvard, or those persons who can't afford at Virginia Tech. And having worked in the educational field for more than 20 years myself as an academician, I'm here to tell you that if we don't catch them now, before they get to school, they can very easily fall down that wrong avenue and go into a population of behavior that is more expensive and much more difficult to redirect. We also have plans as of December the 10th to have the Board of Education come down to preliminary review us for accreditation with the state of Virginia, because the goal is that this 5,000 square feet plus, within the next two to three years, will be a certified private day school that will also serve children with special needs, and everything we do from day one is focused on that.
Okay, questions, council?
A couple. You're fine. I just want to ask you, I'll kind of go through my list. The, you said the background checks are done through the state police, correct?
It is a requirement, yes, sir.
Okay, do you also check the Department of Social Services and Child Protective Services as well?
Yes, we have to.
Okay, and that's all through the Oasis system, that's all done?
Yes, it is, when I say done, it is submitted.
Submitted.
Now, we have, our entire administrative staff are already cleared in the state of Virginia, but because this is another facility and another name, the compliance requires, and it's on the Virginia Department of DSS Regulations for Licensed Daycare Centers, you can see it, I think it's Section 30.118, it states there that we have to do it again.
Right.
So we've all done it again.
Okay, and the, you said that the, I believe we saw a picture of the, as you go outside, there's an exit there, and you said the doors on the left and right side were going to be the computer lab area?
That's correct.
And is that, you said that was going to be open, you made a point to say that you're in the middle of the Section 8 housing as well, you're close to the church, and you're going to have that open to community members as well?
It is open to the public.
To the public.
At no charge.
Okay, and with, what times would it be open to the public in a charge like that?
It'll be open to, when I say the public, it'll be open to the public as far as it relates to school-aged children only.
Okay, that's what I was...
And school-aged children only because we cannot allow persons who are classified as adults to randomly and at-will roam through a facility that houses or serves children who are minors.
That's why I was wondering that, because it made it sound like it was going to be adults going in there, and I was wondering about that.
You have to be cleared.
The, you said also that, just so I understand, it...
No, it's okay.
This is a, it's going to be a certified preschool?
Yes.
And, but yet you also said that there's a plan in place, maybe in the future this is going to be more all-inclusive, not just for pre-K students, is that right?
That is correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
And what age groups are you thinking about that will be served, if not all age groups are?
Currently, the plan, and Everett, if you want to, our administrative director's here, if you want to jump in with this, the plan is that, in the past, we have served, since about 2003, we served through southwestern Virginia from Chatham, Danville, Richmond area, Martinsville, South Boston, we served a population of children who would get expelled from school. And when they were expelled from school, rather than letting them go home, eat up all mom and daddy's food, suck up the air conditioning, watch cable all day, we put them into a pre-vocational work program, which actually paid them a stipend, and this was a FAP-funded program.
FAP-funded?
FAP-funded program, that's right. Right here in Christiansburg, in Roanoke County, I sat on FAP for five years. That program works. FAP money, anybody who's working in the state knows, is null and void, but there is all kinds of grant money that will serve those children, and that's one of the things that I'm very anxious about getting our zoning done, because we can't submit our grants until we know exactly the physical location we're going to be in. That money is available, these are free resources to children who are, I hate the word, but at-risk, children who are about to be dropouts. Christiansburg, and the last statistic that I was able to find recently said Christiansburg had a little over 1,000 dropouts and a 3,000 school population from the ninth grade to the 12th grade. Well, what I'm saying is, no, the Twin Family Life Center can't boil the sea and change out all of Christiansburg's problems, but I do think that we can be a conduit for that particular community.
So I take it then that you also, you said vocational in Richmond as well, that you all will be assisting through GEDs, through someone acquiring at certain age groups, I take it?
That's exactly right, and right now, when we open, the children who are five and under will be leaving the facility by 5:30 each day. That facility, to maximize its capacity and function and impact to the community, will be open until about 8:30 at night, and random staffing, using college students, interns, people who, again, have to be cleared to be in that building, but these are people who are going to work on literacy programs. I'm very concerned about the number of adults, particularly minorities, and when I say minorities tonight, I'm speaking not just African-Americans, but a lot of Hispanic population that has moved to the area. We have bilingual staff, two in particular, they happen to be my daughter-in-laws. We have people who will work with the literacy program, not instead of, but in conjunction with the continuing education program here with the school board. So we are not expecting or planning to, or have the funding to replace any structural Board of Education, but we can be a conduit, we can be a stepping board. Someplace where those youths who think they might drop out can drop in, and maybe they'll see something, have access to something, exposure to something that will change their mind.
And the cost associated with that for the, those students, for instance, again, you're already talking about other government grants, FAP funding if it's...
They pay nothing.
But at this, so it's free to the students?
They will never pay anything out of pocket. That will not happen under the Twin Family Life Center.
One thing, she mentioned at the planning commission, though I thought was interesting, she said, you know, there are so many kids today who come into kindergarten in first and second grade who are already so much behind. Sometimes people, kids who do not get support from their families, some people who just don't have the background, and she said that is one of the big things that this school is trying to do, is the kids that were left behind or not getting the support at home to get the support, so when they get to school, they're not going to be behind.
Well, frankly, kindergarten no longer is a taking nap two or three, two hours a day or a half day. Your kids are coming out of kindergarten already on the second, third grade level, they're entering kindergarten, learning a lot more than, frankly, I did, but I went to kindergarten. But Head Start program, which I'm very familiar with, it's in the area, and it's utilized quite a bit, but obviously capacity issues and funding issues.
That's right.
So you're all, again, you're going to offer the same type of service for pre-K students. You used the word at-risk, and you don't like that, maybe it's a misnumber, but if it is a proper time for kids who just don't have that opportunity, but you are going to be able to facilitate them as well, and primarily you're going to be focused on them, is that...
That is, that's exactly correct. If you leave here with nothing else tonight, I want to make sure that the message is clear, that what the Twin Family Life Center, and the reason we're using the word "life center" is because having been a single mother divorced with four children in Washington DC, though I had a Howard University degree, it was still very difficult to make ends meet. It was still very difficult to volley, making sure that my three sons did not become a statistic, making sure that my daughter wasn't pregnant before she got married, things of that caliber, because I'm old-school roots, right graduated Charlesville High School. So this is where my roots lie, this is where my entire family has always been. What I see and what I want the commitment and the message to be is that every child deserves an opportunity for excellence in living. What's excellent for me might be different than your excellence, but it's my excellence, and I deserve the opportunity to define that. The way many of our children are being forced to live because of poor parenting, we're going to address that with the clinical components that we have. We have master's level licensed clinical therapists on our staff.
Let me interrupt you real quick, because that's a perfect, well, the last question I had was, are you all going to be working in conjunction then with the Department of Social Services, Child Protective Services, to offer parenting classes, for instance, to offer substance abuse courses, to offer, that you are going to be doing that as well?
This is what we do.
So it's an all-inclusive, all-intensive type?
It sounds too good to be true. I know it sounds too good to be true.
Well, the reality is, there's a tremendous need.
This is what I've done for 20 years. Everett, how long have you done it?
About 25.
And the people on the staff have done it anywhere, I think the minimum is 13 years. What we have done is we have collectively, as a family and friends organization, put our resources and skill, education, time, and talent together, and money. I mean, we've leaned on Jim Jones and Milt Rose, those guys have been phenomenal helping us get through this process, and we are willing to say, when I put my dad's picture up there and said it's dedicated to him, it's from my heart. I was born on his birthday, so never mind these, because every time I think about it, it happens.
Ms. Dalton...
But I say that, and I need you to hear this, and I'm done until you ask me something else, and that is this. I want the children of the town of Christiansburg to have an opportunity for educational excellence. I don't want them to become a statistic because I didn't do my part. I just want to do my part.
Ms. Dalton, thank you very much, thanks for the question.
You are.
Let me ask one more question.
See, y'all keep me talking.
I want to ask one more question. Something that you covered in the other meeting, and I think will probably come out from here, was traffic in front of the building.
Yeah.
If you would go over that.
Okay, bring me back to reality. Traffic in front of the building, I actually sat out there on a fly-in from 2:00 to 3:00. Now, I know that's not a lot of time, but that's when the school buses come through. There were three school buses, and there were less than 15 cars, and all of them lived on that deadened area. No one came back out. The Hubble traffic that was initially a major concern because of the huge, the huge Class 8 trucks and traffic that is constantly flowing out of there, they are, I don't know, Jim, how many feet would you gauge that? I'm bad with that. They're on the other side of a gated area.
It would be at least one block the other direction.
Before you get to us. The other thing that is, and I should have stopped in the presentation to show you because I intentionally took it, before you, as you come down Bell Avenue, here is the church. Hubble is here, here's, Hubble is here, here's the church. There is a sharp, there is a sharp L-turn to get into our parking lot. You cannot make that turn at 20 miles per hour safely, so you are forced by default to slow down. That also gauges the safety issue in there. The licensing representative that came by, Julie Kimbrough, also looked at that, the square footage that we are from the main highway to the parking lot, from the parking lot to the actual building where the children would get out of the cars, walk into the facility, it's beyond that the compliance requires, so we more than need the standard, and that's verifiable on the website.
How many students do you anticipate at a minimum, maximum level, or what are you equipped to handle, I guess?
The current staffing that we have, we could easily handle 30. The standards, say, based on the square footage that is required per child, we could probably take 80 children. I'm not looking to take 80 children at that location, because I have a rule, and the rule is 100% of the time supervision, and people who've worked with me or for me before know, I dealt with them. I'm the oldest of six. My mom couldn't watch all six of us at one time. So five children per, that's it. The standard says I can have one, one teacher for 18 students. That's what the state of Virginia says we can have. There is no way that one teacher, I don't care what licensing says, can watch 18 students at one time.
They allow that more than schools?
Yes, they do.
They have said 18 now, the ratio.
So we're one to five most of the time, infants one to four, video conferencing in the room, parents will be able to clock in at any time, you don't need to call me, just clock in if you're registered and you've got the password, we can see what we're doing, anytime, anyplace.
Do you have any plans, I noticed that you talked about the area, and I believe it to be the front of the building, that could be a playground, play area?
It's each of the adjacent sides.
Okay.
When you look at the front, that's the main entrance, and it's grassy, so according to state standards, it qualifies, but we don't want that, we want the children to each have, the infants will have their own play area, and then the pre-K age children will have another play area on the opposite side, and that's because the things that we will put in that playground area are conducive to their age, their age limit.
Are you considering fencing?
We aren't required to fence, but we want fencing for cosmetic reasons.
So you are going to...
Yes.
As soon as possible, if not sooner, fence the, fence those playgrounds?
We will next year.
Okay.
We will next year.
Sure.
By spring is the anticipation, and it's for cosmetic reasons, because I don't want, I come from the criminal justice system, and so I have to really gauge my thinking sometimes, but I work with children who've been abused and abducted and molested, and I'm very probably super-conscious about what's really out there. So we are 100% of the time watching our children.
Ms. Dalton, you're going to draw most of your children from the neighborhood, you think?
We think so, because we have been trying to hold them at the gate, because they see us in there staging and photographing and prepping and praying, and they want, they want to come in, and, you know, a lot of them do not understand the process, as I did not, understand the entire zoning process until we got involved, and your staff has been excellent in making sure that we were able to get through it expeditiously as possible. But we've told them that we are waiting, we invited them to come to the zoning meeting, and they were a little intimidated by that, but I think our presence in that particular community will also serve as a resource to empower people to put buy-in into your community. Don't complain about what council is doing if you're not going to the meetings. You know, I've had that conversation with my staff, we're here because we want something from you, we want the building rezoned, but this should not be the last time that you see someone, whether we get it or not. This should not be the last time that you see someone from our organization here representing that we care about this town.
Two questions. You've answered, you've answered one of them already. You mentioned other centers that you've had, and the question you answered, you've been doing this a long time, 20 years, 25 years, that's impressive. Where are the other locations that the Twin Family Life Center has locations?
The Twin Family Life Center is new. My 20 years have been under someone else's license...
Okay.
Doing all the work.
Okay.
The way they want it done. Is that, Everett, do you want to fence?
So this is, this is a new product?
This is a new product.
A new product.
And basically, we have collaborations already in Richmond with the Board of Education, everybody, they know us by name, because they understand that we are a no-holes bar, if we're doing something wrong, we want you in our house. You don't have to call me, come back, tell me what's wrong. I heard about the taxes, trust me, I am not worried about the taxes, they will be fixed this week, I am not concerned about that. We need a bill, send it to whoever it goes to, thank God it doesn't come to me, but send it to whoever it goes to, and it will be fixed, because that's the kind of people that we surround ourselves with.
And then looking at other little, other resources that we're trying to collaborate in the southern western portion of the state, I currently am an assistant administrator for a private day school. Also, my background goes through the counseling and being a therapist as well, so we're bringing all those components together, I'm sure we'll be able to provide an adequate service for your whole community.
Okay, second question, why did, how did you come to pick our community for your dream here?
Because my husband is a 35-year railroad man who collapsed on the job a year and a half ago. Had a C3, 4, and 5 replacement, and I'm ripping and running to the governor's office every week for re-entry meetings and grant funding meetings and not home. All of my children, my son, I have one graduated, he's in the Army, I have another graduated, he's going to grad school now at Tech, and another has moved on to Charlotte. So we now have the empty nest, and I pretty much could do whatever we decided we wanted to do. So I decided to stop ripping and running and doing all of this for everybody else the way they want it done, and I was at a point in my career and my life where I could do something for my family, something for the community that, where my daughter graduated high school, at Christiansburg High School, and move closer to my sisters and my mother because I needed the family support, and that's how I'm here, and I believe we're here to stay, and I think that if I'm going to be here, I may as well be a valuable part of the community, not just taking up space and breathing air.
Okay, I said too, this is part 2B then. Are you, are you going to be a part of our community? Do you live in the town of Christiansburg?
I live at Windsor Estates.
Very good, okay, excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent presentation.
Can I tell you one thing?
You didn't mention transportation, how will the children get to school?
As at the very beginning, children, most of the children in that neighborhood, their parents, if they don't drive, they will be able to walk them there. The plan is that we will be able to provide transportation. Again, I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse and promise things that I'm not certain of. It is in the vision for the beginning of the year, once we get that license from the state, that means that in that first six months, I can implement that, get my insurance papers in order, make sure that everybody's happy with what we're doing and the quality of the transportation, and who knows, I've, I've got a whole bunch of vehicles in my back fenced leased area right now, I may be able to convert a few. I got to tell you guys this, and ladies, and I am done, you all are probably sick of me, what I'm most excited about this venture is that Mr. Younger is a skilled musician, and music is part of our family's heritage, and what we are presenting in the spring around Easter is the New River Valley Children's Choir, and any child in the town of Christiansburg can be a part of that. And it's all free, it's all funded, but again, they're taking arts out of the school, so we're putting it back in the community and trying to create at least 100 boards children's choir. We're excited.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dalton. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this request? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Shannon Carter, and I have the adjoining parpy Uncle Bob's Self-Storage, and they sent me here to talk about water drainage over, and that parpy tires. I don't know if it's relevant or not, I just had to come and say something about it, but I also live there. I have a 13-year-old son, I didn't realize that is for this type of daycare, that there is a need in that, and I've been there, I've been at Uncle Bob's for 12 years. And the Christiansburg Center did have something for tutoring for children, my son went to it, all the neighborhood children went to it. There is a need, you know, and I live right beside there with the child, so, you know, and I've been there, so I do know there is a need, there's something for after-school, the kids need somewhere to go, they're running wild, nothing to do. When Christiansburg had it, they, the kids were there, you know, they'd give them a little snack, my son got tutoring there, but initially, my company sent me here to talk about the water drainage. I didn't realize it was, you know, what kind of daycare, I just, we're not here to, we're not against it being from industrial to business, that's not our thing, we don't care, but, you know, just hearing you speak, that there is a need, I mean, I live there, I live right next door, and my son has friends that has nowhere to go or nothing to do in the evenings, there's kids there that do need a good daycare and schooling in the area, so that's...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this request? If not, then we'll close this public hearing. This is a matter that the Christiansburg Planning Commission will bring back to council. And if they act on it this week, then it will be the next town council meeting for them to bring us a recommendation. All right, thank you. The second public hearing is council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to a request to vacate two thousand two hundred and eighty square feet a foot portion of a right-of-way located behind 2055 North Franklin Street on the southern side of Sunset Drive. Is there anyone here that would speak to this request? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Thank you all for serving in the capacity that you serve, and I do appreciate that. I have, again, let me start over again. Randall Birch, R&amp;J Birch Properties. We own the car wash there across from Sheetz in front of Wheatland Hills. There is a pie-shaped piece of property, you mentioned twenty-five hundred square feet, that is of no one's use, but possibly could be attached to my piece of property and would give me options in the future. I don't have anything planned for the development of this property other than what it's doing right now. I've been maintaining it and picking up the trash and mowing it since 2003. And so I thought if a town would vacate that piece of property, it would make... The challenge I've got on that lot is it's fairly small, sixty-eight hundreds of an acre, and I've got three setbacks, 460, Farm View, and then the street in the back. So I'm, it very much, those three setbacks limit what could possibly be done with that piece of property. Twenty-five hundred square feet might just be enough for a developer in the future. I, I don't have anything planned for this parcel other than what's, what's there now in the car wash.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this request?
Does this go on the planning commission?
No, this is not a planning commission matter. This is one for councils, the vacation.
Are we gonna deliberate on this to see later this evening if we have questions? Or are we gonna act on it in the future?
Yeah, it'll be a...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Helms, do you know of any anticipated town use for that property at this point?
No, sir, we don't. We're not used to this point, and we don't know of any reason that we need it.
And it is being mowed by Mr. Birch, is that right?
Yes.
All right. So anyone else want to speak to this request? If not, then we'll close this public hearing. Third public hearing is council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to recovery of DUI and reckless driving convictions. This has come up for discussion several times. DUIs and reckless driving fines are usually delegated to the state, and we would like for those fines to come to Town Christiansburg. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this request?
Yeah, but that's not what this does. We, we don't, we don't supersede the ability of the state to fine.
That's right.
We, we would be able to recover our cost and encourage, there's an accident pursuant to DUI.
And that's all we want to do is recover the cost.
Yeah, right.
It's not a revenue-producing item for the town, except to recover the cost. If there's no one to speak to this intention, then we'll close this part of the public hearing. And Christiansburg Town Council is now in session. You have copies of the minutes of the last meeting. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no. This is a part of our public, our meeting when we will hear anyone who would like to address council. And I believe Dr. Sharon Scott is here from the Chamber of Commerce to speak to council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Sharon Scott, and I'm a resident of Christiansburg, 40 Sapphire Avenue. I'm here on behalf of a countywide group known as the Dialogue on Race Relations Committee. This committee is hosting a community summit on January the nineteenth of 2013 at the Blacksburg Community Center from ten until 2:00 P.M. And it's no happenstance that that is Martin Luther King's birthday. This program will be facilitated by Dr. Wornie Reed and Andy Morkawa. The cool thing that, and I got involved with this just as a happenstance through leadership program. Focus groups were held over the last twelve months with this countywide group with members of the African-American community to determine areas of concern that they have in our community. It is my understanding that eighty to ninety percent of the participants from the African-American community were in fact from Christiansburg, participating in this. As our elected leaders, I would hope to see you on January the nineteenth as we open a dialogue to improve the relations within our community. I have a letter here with more information on the event. The Chamber of Commerce is promoting, we are not sponsoring, the program. May I approach?
Yes.
Thank you. Within that letter, there are contacts that you can make for more information as well as the contact to reserve a space. We're hoping to have about fifty to sixty individuals participating in this event. And oh my goodness, we have space that would accommodate two hundred and twenty-five. If only we would be that lucky. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. We are on the list, sir, for the Chamber of Commerce. And if you would put this information on the list, sir, that each councilman will receive it at home. And then we'll receive copies here in the office as well.
Absolutely. And it will be on the chamber calendar as well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Scott. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? If not, then we will close the citizens' hearing. Discussion by council members on tax relief for the elderly. This was the ordinance that will update the annual income limits for exemption from deferred, from, from our, let me start again. It sets the limits of exemption from our deferred of taxation of real estate manufactured homes as defined in the Code of Virginia. This was on the agenda of the public hearing on November the twentieth. And I believe, Mr. Helms, it's the same guidelines that we use for the county.
So the county has adopted these and will be...
And we'll, we'll adjust the income accordingly.
Makes it much easier when you send out tax tickets. Everybody's using the same center number.
Planning Commission, we accept the ordinance update.
So.
Motion and a second to update this ordinance for tax relief for the elderly. Discussion. Ms. Clark, will you poll council on this matter?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
And that is a five-o vote, and the motion carries. You should have in your packet a resolution in appreciation for the Christmas Kitchen that is held every year. It's been going on for twelve years. It was initiated by Garland Lenkus. And your resolution tells you something about the program. They were also recognized by the General Assembly last year, the Senate and the House of Delegates. And so we are presenting this to you in appreciation to Mr. Lenkus and his volunteers for providing Christmas dinner on Christmas Eve for anyone who desires to come and have a Christmas dinner.
Mr. Mayor, I've been fortunate to, to work the last three or four years. And he does, he and his crew do just a tremendous job. And I would say last year, three, three hundred, four hundred people there, and just doing just a great job. Now, I've heard he's having some problems this year finding a spot. Last couple of years, he's had the Moose Lodge.
He'll be in the Moose Lodge.
He will again this year too?
Okay. Yeah. Over the last twelve years, they have fed approximately five thousand people. And not only do they provide dinner for those who appear in person, they also provide dinner for police officers and Montgomery County Sheriff's Office and the jail staff who are assigned the duty on Christmas Eve. They take their dinner to them. So it's a great program. And we'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution. And Mr. Lenkus will be here at our next meeting to hear the resolution.
Well, so moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. Third is a resolution of support for safe routes to school travel plan for Christiansburg Primary and Christiansburg Elementary Schools. That's for me, I'm not here. I have a letter that's being passed around. It's from a child at Christiansburg Elementary School, and he's asking the mayor if we can build sidewalks around the schools so that children who walk to school will have, will have safe passage. I think it was just ironic that this child happened to write a letter this week, and I did respond to it.
It has speaking points on it, too.
Yeah, he does. He has some speaking. He said, "Not only will the children be safe, but the parents will appreciate." And this is, how's this being paid for?
It'd be a grand.
It's one hundred percent this year.
It's a hundred percent.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
And there's a, there's an area between Christiansburg Primary School and Christiansburg Elementary School that really needs a sidewalk.
Is, what we have here is in green, new sidewalks or...
It's just proposed projects that we're looking at. The first one is gonna be that tie between the two schools.
Right.
And then behind the school at Overlook Court, there's a potential tie in there also. And then improve the crossings at Betty Drive and Deep Up Street. Okay, Wade's Lane.
Now, the crossings, are those electronic crossings?
We're proposing to be electronic, absolutely.
Good. And it'd be good to have a sidewalk extended on Wade's Lane for kids who may be old enough to walk to school.
I make a motion, we support the resolution to apply for the SRTS.
So.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution to apply.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
In regards to, the program's fantastic, and it's overdue, and it's great, it would be great for the town. But does it include, sidewalk include bike lanes at all?
No, because we're looking at...
Just pure walking?
Pure walking, but more like a multi-purged path possibly.
So would it, would it allow?
A bicycle.
It would allow, okay.
Yeah, it just depends on how the progress is gonna work and how the engineering's gonna work and the best way to get the dollars spent to go as far as they can.
And a hundred percent?
Yes, this year.
Eighty, twenty, next year.
Correct.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor?
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Clark, will you poll council on this resolution?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
And that is a five-o vote, and that motion carries. Thank you very much. Next is a request from the Planning Commission for authorization from town council to review amending the town code to require that all delinquent taxes be paid in full before a rezoning or a conditional use permit can be approved for properties. And to be honest, I thought we did that already.
We don't.
We don't.
We don't have authority to require them to tie you before they're gonna apply. Not in current code.
Well, how many, I mean, if you could throw a ballpark percentage out there, the people that apply for the CUP or rezoning?
It's not very often.
Okay.
I could give you basic clarification on why we came to that at the last meeting when they came to us on the Bell Road situation. And someone, I don't know, it was Nicole bothering up or not, that the company had delinquent taxes for the area that they wanted to place their school in, and that they had not paid taxes. Very, was it one or two years that they had not paid the taxes?
I don't know exactly, no.
And I think, I think they need to pay this year's taxes by, is it tomorrow? It has not been paid. So one of the people on, on the commission said that they knew other places that stated that they would not do a rezoning or CUP for a company that has delinquent taxes. And everybody on the planning commission found out that that might be a, a good idea. And so we're just throwing it in to council.
Well, just so I understand, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the presentation we heard this evening, though, if we did decide to go forward with this, I take it it would not apply? It'd be retroactive if we applied to them, so to them, to that organization?
They, they don't always...
Correct, people, it wouldn't apply in this case at all anyway. But I bet this, this is what brought it to the attention of the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Seems like a reasonable question. I would support that.
I kinda felt like the mayor did.
I thought, well, if you did that, I can imagine awarding a CUP or rezoning to someone who owes taxes on the property.
We can always suggest it, but we can't require it.
How move we proceed with reviewing the town code?
I hear a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to review amending the town code to require that delinquent taxes be, that be paid before CUP or rezoning is done.
And a lot of thanks to the planning commission for bringing that to our attention. I would have never known.
Yeah, that's a great thing to call.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we should count Joe Powell.
Joe.
If I got to take anything away from you, Nicole.
No, but Joe, their county changed their code to do that, also when Joe was there.
Any further discussion? Ms. Clark, will you poll council on this matter?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's a five-o vote, I believe. And the motion carries, and thank you. Next is a request from the Planning Commission. The town council consider authorizing compensation to the Planning Commission Chair for town council meeting attendance. And I suppose that is for meetings that he is required to attend.
If you want me to clarify that, what they're thinking, everybody else on the planning commission is a member of a subcommittee. And if you remember last year, several months ago, we voted, and we voted that planning commission members who go to a subcommittee meeting would also be paid some additional salary. The plant, the, the, the chair is not on any of these committees, okay? But the chair sometimes, Craig has to sometimes do additional jobs. And, and they were just wanting to make sure. He does such a tremendous job. He's an excellent facilitator. He does such a tremendous job, he's an excellent facilitator, and they just want to make sure at the time, should come by, that he would be compensated for his time.
What kind of rate were they, had been?
Twenty-five bucks.
Just twenty-five dollars?
Yeah.
It's not really a salary, it's just a government cost.
It's a sort of bonus, I guess.
Did we definitely separate the chair out from that? I figured being a member of the Planning Commission, he, he would automatically, if he attended one, be eligible.
Excuse me? You wanted it separated.
He, I remember Craig, he came for us and said, "I'm not doing this for me, I'm doing this for those individuals as part of the subcommittee," he said, he's leaning on a lot, and said he, I think in fact, did not want to be someone included as being paid, very gracious of him.
So, definitely our decision separated him from the rest of the members of the Planning Commission.
Well, I agree with Steve. He does, does such a good job and has for a long time, that I would, I would move that we enter into this topic of agreement, we pay him on meetings.
Do you think?
I would second.
All right, it's a motion and a second to authorize compensation to the Chairman of the Planning Commission for Town Council Meetings. Motion and a second, discussion?
It's my understanding he did not bring it up.
No, he didn't.
Is he going to take it?
Well, how about that?
We'll see when he cashes the first check.
Mayor, I assumed that you're going to pay him the same amount that you would pay him to attend the Planning Commission.
Yes.
The motion will reflect that when it is...
Yeah, I thought it did.
Yeah, I thought I heard that.
Yeah, thank you.
That a clerk heard it as well.
It's the same rate of pay.
His rate.
All right. Any further discussion on this matter? Since it's one that includes money, Ms. Clerk, will you poll council again, please?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It's a five oh vote, that motion carries, and Nicole, will you notify the chair that we want him here, he'll be paid? Town manager?
Should I copy the bills? Like, bill pay him in fast?
Make the motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills, you have any questions about anything on the list of bills? If not, all in favor of paying the bills for November, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Ms. Tweedy, Mr. Helms, pay the bills.
I have three public hearings to set. First one's for the budget amendment we talked about at the work session last week. I recommend sending, setting that for fifteenth of January. We should be able to bring that to you by then. That's a budget amendment for this year's budget, completed to the throw-in of all the land purchased and...
Sub move.
Trucks.
Trucks, yes, garbage trucks.
Trucks. Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second to hold that public hearing, is it the third Tuesday and fifteenth?
Maybe we should word it the second meeting of January, in case the meeting days get changed.
All right. All in favor, can I ask that? All in favor of setting that for January fifteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Sometimes I get lost.
Second one's for a conditional use permit for residential use in B three at one fifteen Fisher Street.
Yeah, let me, I gotta miss any direction real quickly. Do we just agree to set on January fifteenth, or is we agree to set on the second meeting of January?
Second meeting.
Fifteenth, but second meeting.
That is the second.
Well, if, at the organizational meeting, if we decided to go second for Tuesdays, it's, I'm sure it's going to be a topical discussion.
I don't think that would be a problem.
So, second, so, are we set on the fifteenth for the second?
Let's just say second meeting.
Sounds good, second meeting, okay.
The condition use permit for residential, residential use in the B three at one fifteen Fisher Street, I recommend that for the second meeting in January also.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion and a second, set that public hearing for January fifteenth. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Thank you.
The public hearing for the joiner study, Blacksburg is having theirs, I believe it's their second meeting in January, and I would recommend setting hours for the first meeting in February, if you, so, if you want to.
Wow, you said the first meeting in February, I was anticipating it would be the same meeting, the second meeting in January, I'd like to...
That's my suggestion, change it if you're having this.
I mean, I would, I should, I'll defer to council, I would not set it beyond that, further than the first of February.
How about June?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, we, we tried to...
That's what I was going to ask, we got more to do, push it out. Can you elaborate?
We had tried to stay on schedule with the Blacksburg and Virginia Tech's interest in this by scheduling something similar around them, so that kind of fits to do it February.
Will we move to the second meeting of February?
Could, could we bring it up at next meeting? The, the second meeting of December to discuss whether or not to put it on the first one of February?
Okay, we don't run any, any type of posting problems, okay. Sure we'll table it.
I, I would move to table the setting of the public hearing on the joiner study till the second meeting of December.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and second to table this item until the next meeting, and set the date for second meeting in February, is that what I heard?
Well, no, just a discussion, just a, yes, a discussion.
All right. Okay, motion to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries.
The next item was, y'all agreed back several months ago for Arrow Pro when they were moving into the industrial park to waive the water sewer connection fee of two fifteen thousand dollars. And now, the, Mr. Hamilton from the county's Economic Development Branch has asked, he has been asked, and he passed on to us, if we would waive the permit fee, building permit fee also, and...
That fee's how much?
It'd be about seven thousand, says seven thousand seventy-two dollars is what they What that would do would bring the payback to seven years instead of five years.
If they've already started moving dirt over there, what difference does it make? If we say no?
I, I'm glad they're in Christiansburg, they're, they're a spinoff. I have no connections there, but I know they started in Blacksburg, they had one option where to expand. I think it's an act of good faith, welcome them to our community, and they are a high paying, desirable type industry, I support that.
Was it in the paper?
Yeah, we had invitations.
Is there any chance of offering a displeasure?
Not for, he takes it off there.
Well, we're already fifteen in it, Barry, let's just go ahead and, and do that, too.
An agreement, we could do an agreement if they don't complete their construction and all the headway down, provide so many jobs for so many years.
So, that's it? Yeah, I like that. You said we can do that?
But then pretend that it's not.
What if they go out of business prior to the seven years?
That's a good point. I, are we, are we going to take action on this this evening?
Like, we do if you...
I make a motion that we grant the request contingent on them obtaining a certificate of occupancy. And if they don't get a CO, then that means they haven't done something right, or they're not going to be here, and they should have to pay that fee. Because that's part of it, is inspection, right? That, I mean, does it seem, is that a logical?
Well, I like that, but, I mean, just, I mean, if it was five, now it's seven years, I mean, would, have you ever, I don't think it's inconceivable for us to, you know, if they go out of business within seven years, which I would assume they would. There's avenues to obtain our money, to get our essential funds back from that.
Well, it's not like, it's not, I would agree with you, except for the fact that we're really not spending, it's a sta, it's a, it's a, you know, we're not paying money.
Right, right.
We're not paying money to do it, it's, it's sort of an act of good faith to, you know, to encourage their startup here. I would agree with you if it was a cash out league.
The only reason I look at this is... Let me change the tape.
All right, let's hold it right here, go ahead and change. Let's go.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me just finish my thought, the reason why is, I mean, we, we have, you know, we're very business friendly, and, and that's a plus for us. We have done some concessions for them already, they've come back for more. To me, it's about setting a precedent that, you know, future companies will come to us, but, I mean, I think we should establish some sort of agreement or contract, yeah, we are willing to work with you, but we expect some longevity out of, out of the relationship.
The performance agreement, of course.
Yeah, I mean, performance agreement, we could do it.
As long as, as long as it's simple and straightforward, I support that, I, I just like the con, and, and those are the type of businesses you want, because they're providing jobs, it's not just retail or something.
For how long? We need to put that down, too, for how long?
Well, I think for, for us to recapture our, our fee, which is now seven years for doing this, I think seven years is, I mean...
So, really, your performance agreement is only going to be with, with a guard of longevity, and won't have anything to do with minimum employment or anything like that, so it's a very simple agreement.
Okay, I'll revise, I'll revise my motion to say that we grant the request that's been made contingent on the issuance of a cer, a certificate of occupancy, as, as well as them being in business for a period of seven years following issuance of a cer, certificate of occupancy.
Do we want, like, staying in business or not moving to another location, is that the same thing?
Well, the fun's staying in business.
All right, they could, they could keep one person there, so, taking care of the shop, maybe I would still consider.
I'm sorry, councilman, so, your performance agreement would be that, that they're wa, we're going to waive?
Waive the building permit fee.
Upon performance, and that performance will be that they maintain their business at that premises for seven years.
Yes, they maintain their business.
Bible business.
A Bible business, I don't think, put a threshold on the number of employees they have. I mean, that can get squid, ticklish.
And that they obtain a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, that's, that would be, that would be the starting time period for their seven years is getting, being able to occupy the building and, and start doing business, I guess.
The building permit fee that we charge, is that a standard charge, or does that include or exclude our time, our staff time in reviewing?
What is it? Review covers, I mean, it covers review time?
Yeah.
Or, it's meant to.
It's based on...
It's based on square footage.
Yeah.
Okay. Craig, we have a motion on the floor, did we have a second?
Can we have Michelle read that out again? What the, what the actual motion? I'm sorry, Michelle.
Steve wants to make sure he's, he's listed as an employee.
I'll read it back.
All right, thank you, go listen to that.
What I have is that Councilman Stipes amended his motion to grant the request contingent on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, as well as the company maintaining a Bible business for seven years following the issuance of the CO.
Sounds better than what I thought it said.
Don't discuss it when you get home, Brad.
Well done, Brad.
If you change this, let us know.
I would suggest, Ms. Clerk, that you say that Mr. Stipes made the motion, not amend the motion, otherwise we would have had to take action on an amendment.
Yes, sir.
That's what you meant to say, Brad. Say what you meant to say, Brad.
Very well put, Mr. Stipes.
All right, did we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, further discussion?
One quick question, how many individuals are they looking to employ? I just can't recall. Anybody remember on council?
There's an, in the paper, wasn't there?
Yeah, I can't recall either.
It's that important, thank you.
Fifty-six in that matter.
Yeah, fifty.
Something like that.
And those are...
And they're, those are good, good jobs.
Yeah, that's pretty good, that's pretty good workforce. All right, Ms. Clerk, you will poll council on this matter.
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's a five oh vote, the motion carries. Thank you, what else, Mr. Helms?
Christmas parade will be on December fourteenth at seven P M.
Are we going to march in it, are we going to ride in it, are we going to place in?
B T, the B T bus?
I don't want to ride the B T bus again.
We can arrange that, but...
I know, I know, if you want us to, we can do that.
Well, you should, they offer it, don't they?
Is that the same thing?
Yes. My kids are now accustomed to riding in style on the Christmas parade stuff.
You ride, and then you watch, and it encourages people.
It was so cold the last time, I was kind of white being inside that bus, too. All right. December the?
Fourteenth, seventh.
Fourteenth, seven o'clock?
Are you going to check on getting the bus then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll call B T and tell them to clean one up and, and ready for...
Usually they offer it. I don't care if it's cleaned up, long as the heat works, it doesn't matter to me. If you have to, request one with the Christiansburg features on it.
That's a good point.
And if, if you want to do this, bring your children, your wives, and we'll all board the bus and ride in the rain.
There'll be a go anywhere requested.
We got that theory, don't we? We're right at the front.
Go deal with it, huh?
Over Thanksgiving, we tried collecting garbage a little different way, tried to reduce the overtime on Friday, instead of collecting on Friday, after Thanksgiving, we tried doing Thursday and Monday on Monday, and Friday and Tuesday on Tuesday. Did y'all get any feedback on that? You very mad?
Other than my mom, everything's fine, though.
The feedback I've gotten has been trying to keep the leaf collection in sync with the garbage collection, and we fell behind because of Craig Mountain and Sherwood Forest, and some of those areas where they had umpteen leaves. So, we're, we're still trying to catch up.
Still got them up there. Barry, on that note, she did speak with a couple of fellows, I don't know if she laid down in front of a truck or just stopped it, but they're very cordial to her, very nice, I mean, just, and I wanted to tell you when I met with you earlier, but to thank them, they're, they're very nice, nice to her, and I appreciate that.
Frankly, our street didn't, we, we didn't have any issues whatsoever.
Well, we'll try it again after Christmas, on Wednesday, we'll pick up Monday and Wednesday, and Thursday, we'll pick up Tuesday and Thursday's routes, and try to see if it works again, then we might continue doing that on two-day holidays.
I've got to tell you, those guys really do a fantastic job, particularly public relations.
Yes, they do. It makes you happy, everybody's happy. That's right. And most people in my neighborhood, I, usually that's who we get the emails from, or if they catch me, we get them, but that was the only issue.
We did have a few, few people call, their top was one, when it was going to be picked up, we could advertise better for the Christmas time.
Is it, was that on the website, by the way?
Yes.
It was on the...
It's in the paper on the website.
And I'm not saying that other people don't check. And we still don't have the capability to do e-notifications?
We do if they sign up.
Yeah. I don't think they sign, I'm, I'm getting a little ahead with that, but that'd be a nice little thing to send out a notice on, but you don't have everyone's email. If we're putting on the website, I think it's good, plus newspapers that we do.
Are things, are they ever in Water Bill or something? Is that something we've ever considered?
Next Water Bill goes out first part of January, so...
I mean, I mean, the previous one, just to say, is there any note in there that we need to add?
We could, we could start with...
I think that's a great idea. I think, I was, I, I support it regardless, but I think some kind of notification that is, you know, saturating would be a good one, the water bill's a good one. That way, if someone calls, you say, well, you, you know, it wasn't the water bill, but this is what we're doing.
I do wanna say, those email notice, notifications that we get, I mean, I, I have one from my home ad, email address, work, and I think they're great. I mean, the key is to get more people enrolled in. Because it's a lot of information, I think that was on one of those notifications, was it, for the garbage, or is it just someone on our homepage?
I don't remember.
I don't recall if it's on the, uh...
And this was, people, both words came up, this towards getting close to Thanksgiving, so, with that, because other water bills gone out, we'll try to get it on water bills from now on, then we'll do it.
Might inquire with Scoop Gordon about the messenger and see if he'll run something a day or two before, or the...
We ran it in the messenger, but we maybe do an article on it or something, make it more obvious.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate these ongoing efforts to be sensitive to overtime, and so, whatever we decide is a board, I appreciate the efforts that staff is making to be, do things differently, let's save money, so, I'm fine with that, and sorry to cause a battle on work, but if we stick a notice in the water bill, we can show...
We just send it to the burner, they stop it.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Okay, the last thing I have is a little update on the trails. Phase two A, I should open bids on this fourteenth of December. That's the section behind Wildland Home Depot. This section, basically from there, on to connect into Recreation Center. B Dots promised on individuals that they were going to work on getting the environmental process done, so we can proceed with getting the plans to them, and hopefully get those bid sometime in the spring. Of course, last meeting, Mr. Witty said he's gonna donate the right-of-way for the trail, section two D, which goes down between Lions Gate and Oak Tree Townhomes. We're working on figuring out with that, that should be signed shortly. And still working with other landowner on two B, there behind the rear crossing. That plat's been submitted, and we're working on getting a signature on that.
And the engineering for section two B been done, the extension of the Jim Van Huger...
Yes, the preliminary plan is...
Sorry, I'll cut the slide, or, I'll tell you, I'm sorry, has engineering been done for that?
Yes, we have some, we've made first comments on it, back to the engineers, and I think basically they'll be ready to get it done as we get to environmental.
Is that right? That's fantastic.
That's for...
Yeah. See, that'll, that'll connect up. They're sort of working on that, I think.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Barry.
Mr. Helms, anything on the what we passed the last time with respect to giving the day, full day, New Year's Eve, and what the state is doing?
The governor, as we understand, has declared the twenty-sixth as a holiday also, it's the day after Christmas.
And I believe we passed a motion to adopt the state guidelines for you. Time off for employees. So, now we're looking at twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas. Okay, what else, Mr. Helms? Mr. Barber?
At our budget meeting third, last Thursday, Brad Everly had, had brought forth some figures and about the differential between what we charge for out-of, out-of-town members to the rec center. I asked Brad to present that last night at the meeting, and we talked about it in great, in, in great depth. One of the things that, and, and I'm gonna use it for instance, on, on one of the memberships, we were charging three fifty, and we saw that Redford was charging four hundred, and Blacksburg wasn't in the mix, because they do something on a daily pass. What the rec commission came up with last night as a suggestion, and, and actually as a recommendation, was that we're not going to touch, and, and we were looking at all memberships. We're not, we're not gonna touch the senior memberships, out-town memberships. We're going to go halfway, the difference halfway between what the town charges now and what Redford charges, so this particular membership would go from three fifty to three seventy-five. Figures, it's a generation, it will generate about another twelve thousand dollars in income. It was suggested that we do this gradually, to see what impact it might have on out-of-county memberships and day passes and so on and so, but all of the, all of the, the classes will be affected, or the memberships will be affected by, we're going up half to, 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 about half of what we've, Redford's doing. So, it would be, I think, some of the day passes or monthly passes, we're gonna go up five dollars, so on and so forth. He sent me an email, and I apologize, I did not get it printed off. I will forward that thing over to, to council tomorrow, I'm gonna get back to work.
Mike, when will these go in?
July one, when the, when the town budget?
If, you know, if, if we do, if they do our adopted, you know, we put them in, I'd like, like the friend to, which I know it will do, but... And Barry, I'd like for you to follow up on this, see, you know, how many members we lose, or if this affects out, out-of-town membership at all. I know that's a lot, the pushback we get from the Aquatic Advisory Board about charging more for out-of-town residents that come there and swim. I think this is a hands-on sort of study we can look at, over six months.
And again, we won't know that probably until this time next year.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, starting July and then come January, we should know something.
But he said, you know, the, the strange thing is, the majority of the out-of-town, out-of-town memberships are monthly passes.
Right.
They pay by the month, so, still a good deal anyway, any way you slice it, so, that's, I mean, you, you had asked the rec commission to do this, we did, we did do it last night, and their recommendation is, as I said, and I'll, I'll shoot those, that email from Brad over.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be any repercussion from it, the fees have remained the same ever since the day the rec center opened, and that's been how long ago?
Fourteen years.
Fifteen years.
Fourteen, fifteen years, yeah. And it did, it did say that our local membership is eighty-six percent of the attendance of the total membership, and the out-of-town is like fourteen percent of the total membership, so...
Alright, thank you, Mr. ...
Did we increase those a couple of years ago, I remember Art presenting us with out-of-town fees going up?
We were, we were looking more at the participation fees in the, in the salon, in the sports programs, I believe.
They did increase those, those increased.
Yeah, they have been increased, yeah.
I think that's a prudent approach, instead of going the whole way with what's going on, I think it's, I hadn't thought of that, but I liked the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, you're very welcome, Mr. Barber.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I wanted to add this, just for, for the record. Last week, a lady in my neighborhood passed away, and her husband came and talked to me and was just, was so impressed with the rescue squad, and how quickly they got to his house with his wife, and how diligent they were with trying to resuscitate her, and the attitude that they had. And unfortunately, she passed away, but he said that the rescue squad did everything they could and did a tremendous job, and I, I'd just like, would like to add that in the ref.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hubbard. The rescue squad did have their annual dinner and awards program this past Friday evening, I believe it was. And an excellent program, their membership has increased, and things are running smoothly. I asked Joe, Joe Coyle, how many calls he had made. He gave me an approximate figure, but he thought that might be a little bit low. One thousand two hundred and eighty calls that he has responded to personally this year. That's tremendous.
Mayor, I'd like to piggyback just a bit, just from what I see, I, I know at Adventure Club, there's one or two of our volunteer crew members, and I wanna say they're, they're above the average licensing, but you can just, they're involved in, these volunteers are in different aspects of our life, and, and believe me, at least this person I'm, I'm referring to, he's actively recruiting, because I know at the Adventure Club, they bring in students from Rafford and Tech, and you always see him, you know, they're always sitting around, I mean, watching the kids, of course, but you can tell he's, he's talking with them, and you can pick up on some of the things, like he's trying to, I mean, they're actively recruiting members, and I don't think I've ever heard or seen that before, so I'd just like to...
Well, they've had, they've had such a membership increase, now they've got a waiting list.
That's, that's great.
Tremendous. December the eighteenth is our next meeting, and that's also the evening we're gonna be interviewing prospective candidates for planning commission, six o'clock. And we'll get started at ten minutes after for, with our first interview, so please be on time.
And one thing if I could add, Mr. Mayor, before we hit this, take fifteen seconds, at the budget meeting that Mr. Barber brought up last time, last Tuesday? Is that what it was, last Thursday?
Tuesday, what?
It was last Tuesday?
They all run together.
I don't know if it was, I don't know if we brought video or not, but I think, I feel like I kinda had to explain, at seven thirty, hour after we got here, I just took off running out of the room. But we had a, the council, we had an injury with our youngest daughter, and so obviously I was going to the E R, but I, on the video, I think I spoke to you off, but I gotta go back, and I was going, and, and...
Checks into my own eyes.
Right, I was like, I needed an explanation, because people probably thought, well, he just didn't wanna be at me, to be honest with you.
We thought an ambulance came.
We're just thankful that the child is okay.
She is, she's fine, everything worked out, and Lewis Gill Hospital was fantastic, fantastic, so we, no ill effects suffered, and we're all benef...